Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Tonight is the regularly scheduled school board meeting. It is our reorg meeting. And what we'd like to do before every meeting is stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, I'm going to hand out tonight is the reorg meeting, so everyone will be reassigned their board positions tonight. So Lauren will lead us tonight in that reorg.
So first, we'll swear in the new trustees, Mr. Kassen was sworn in earlier this week. Michelle. Repeat after me. I, Michelle Lissio, do solemnly swear.
I, Michelle Lissio, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
For the Board of Education.
For the Board of Education.
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Now, accept nominations for the position of President of the Board of Education.
So, we're just going to nominate the board right now? The President?
Yes. So, someone would, I nominate, and then someone else will say.
I nominate Michelle Lissio for President.
Second. All in favor? You can read it if you want to read it in that way.
I, Michelle Lissio, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, Town of Eastchester, County of Westchester, State of New York, according to the best of my ability.
Okay, up to you. Do you want to accept nominations for Vice President, or do you want me to do it?
Okay, well, do you want to do it?
So, next, accept nominations for the position of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Okay, I asked you to do it because I wanted to nominate Cynthia Tate for Vice President.
Second?
Second.
Do we have to all? Lauren, I think we'll have to vote.
Second. All in favor?
I, Cynthia Tate, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge duties of Vice President for the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District, Town of Eastchester, County of Westchester, State of New York, according to the best of my ability.
Okay. Okay, this is for you. Okay. Okay, appointed district clerk, is that where we are? Okay. Resolved that the, do I read the whole resolution here? Resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Lauren Zagorsky-Truhl to the position of district clerk to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the 2017-18 school year at an annual rate pay of $11,410. Do we need to?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Oh, do I say, Daj? Okay, second, I think was Pete. All in favor? Okay, and now you're going to read yours.
I, Lauren Zagorsky-Truhl, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, Town of Eastchester, County of Westchester, State of New York, according to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you, Lauren, and thank you for your service to the Board. She's been an absolute asset to us, and thank you for your continued service. Okay, next. Appointed district treasurer. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Faith Sparks to the position of treasurer to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the 2017-18 school year. The district clerk will administer the oath of office tomorrow to Ms. Sparks. Okay, next. Appoint a claims auditor. Oh, we have to vote?
Yep.
Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, all in favor? Okay. Appoint a claims auditor. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Michael Oliveri to the position of claims auditor to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the 2017-18 school year at the annual rate of pay of $10,790. Again, the district clerk will administer the oath of office the following day. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Daj, all in favor? Okay, so now we're to presentations and comments.
Congratulations.
Okay, comments by the Board. Okay, let's see. Pete, you want to start?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Just like to say that I'm very excited and happy to be on the Board finally, and I'm looking forward to serving you all and doing as good a job as I possibly can, and I just wanted to say thank you to all those that came out and supported me and voted for me. Again, I'll do the best I can, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Daj.
Hello, everyone. Just wanted to give, I guess, a final congratulations to all the graduates and award winners and scholarship winners, and looking forward to an exciting year. Thanks.
Cynthia.
I want to thank my fellow Board members for, I guess, having faith in me and nominating me to be the Vice President, and I will do my best to serve on the Board and for the community. And congratulations to all the students, and I hope you're enjoying your summer.
Hello, everybody, again. Congratulations to the Board members officially. Now, we're a full Board for the upcoming couple, the next couple of years. Congratulations to Michelle and to Cynthia for their positions as President and Vice President. I look forward to working with you guys. We have a lot of work to do. Hopefully, we can get that done, and we'll have a good, strong year. Congratulations to all the kids, the awards, the graduates. The first time as a Board member sitting through all those ceremonies. It's pretty impressive. I was enjoyable, and it was great to see the kids get recognized for their hard work. So, kudos to the kids, and good job by the parents in helping the kids push forward. That's all.
Okay, also, again, congratulations to our new Board members. While it seems a little odd that July 1st is the start of our school year when our kids are in summer recess, but it is the start of a new year for us. So, I really want to let the community know that this Board is fully committed to working together to serve our district, to serve our students, and to serve our community, and we look forward to a very good year ahead. Again, on what Rob said, really, you don't know until you serve the pride you feel for this school and these students. And when we're at the graduation ceremonies and all the accolades, it is the time that we really, I really never knew that the pride I could feel for 1,100 students. So, again, congratulations to all, and wishing all a very safe and healthy summer, and everyone really to please be safe and healthy. And that's it. Carl?
Sure. First, welcome to Peter Kassen, his first official Board meeting, and congratulations to Cynthia Tate as Vice President, and to Michelle Lissio, of course, as President. The summer, I heard people say, our students are on summer vacation, but I will say they had a very strong finish to the school year. We were very proud of all of them, and many of them are very active in the summer. We have a number of programs here in the school that are underway. We have some special education programs happening throughout the summer months. We also have the Summer Scholars Program at the middle school. We also employ, many people may not know this, but we employ a number of students working on facilities over the summer, working as tutors with our students in the Summer Scholars Program. And our task program down at Cottle also employs a good number of Tuckahoe students, and they do amazing work, and they've worked very hard, and we are proud of all of them. I also want to just mention, because we did not have public comment on this, but last week, the Board of Education accepted the resignation for the purpose of retirement of George Albano, the principal of the William E. Cottle Elementary School for the past six and a half years. We want to congratulate him. He did some amazing work at Cottle. He brought back science programs. He implemented strings programs and various music programs and new curricula in ELA and math, and he's done some fantastic work that really, really has proven to show increased in student performance and wonderful results over the years. At this time, we are going to be posting for an interim principal of the Cottle School for next school year. We will also be considering people for that interim position as potential full-time principals at Cottle, but that posting will go up tomorrow, and we will be aggressively pursuing a high-quality person to lead the school in the year ahead and possibly beyond. Also, I'd like to ask Lee Liu just to mention, we have a number of facilities, projects underway. The moment the students left, Lee and her team sprung into action, and, Lee, can you just give the audience an overview?
Sure. Some of the things we're doing this summer include, we're dividing classrooms down at Cottle to make more space for new classrooms that we need there. We're doing electrical renovations to computer labs and to the stage and other places within the district that we need to upgrade our electricity. We're relining the parking lots. We're doing masonry repairs and renovations around the district. We are on a cycle of painting classrooms, so we have several classrooms lined up for painting as well as offices around the district. Late in the summer, we refinish both gym floors, and we do a thorough cleaning every summer for the kitchens as well as every classroom and hallway and every nook and cranny that we can get into. So, it's a busy time.
Thank you, Lee. And just one other item, the Board on July 17th will be meeting all day for a Board retreat, and we first will focus on setting goals for the upcoming school year. The Board will officially adopt those goals for the Board as well as for me, as Superintendent, in the fall, probably at the September Board meeting. Also, the Board is very committed to forging ahead with the capital project. We've had a lot of discussion for well over a year, and this summer, we plan to work very hard to refine that project and have something out to the public by October. At the next workshop, the Board Retreat Session, we will hold a brief meeting to pass a secret resolution which will set us up for a vote later in the summer that could potentially have a public vote out there for October. So, we will keep you informed on our progress in that area. That's all.
Okay. So, this is now the first recognition of the audience. It's an opportunity to discuss anything that is on the agenda, if anyone would like to approach. Nope. Allison?
I just wanted to, I noticed on the agenda that we're accepting the resignation of one of our high school Spanish teachers. It was brought up during the debate of candidates that our Foreign Language Department is suffering, in particular with Spanish teachers. For a number of years, the Spanish teachers have been a revolving door. It has really been a very big issue. The children are not learning what they need to learn. It's affecting our AP class. As you know, we've had to eliminate that because so many parents have decided to not have their child continue on with Spanish. I did speak to the high school principal regarding the hiring of a teacher. He had stated that it's really more of a budget issue, that he is instructed to hire someone at not the highest rate. So, I'm asking that we please, in hiring the new Spanish teacher this summer, consider hiring someone who is the best teacher, not the best for what we're willing to pay, but the best overall. And if that means that we have to hire someone at Step 10 with an MA plus 30 or MA plus 60, then we do it because this department has really suffered enough, and our students have really, really been affected and suffered with this. So, please, give them the leeway to hire at a rate that will give us the best, strongest teacher we can. Thanks.
Want to address that, Carl?
Sure. In the past, the district usually budgets, Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, MA Step 2 for new teachers, on an average. There is always flexibility, but, you know, we try to stick to that with new hires, but, Ms. Halloran, you are 100% correct. This is a very high-demand area. You would think in the New York area that it would be easy to find Spanish teachers because we have many bilingual people in this area, but it's not the case. Areas like physics, foreign languages, and some other specialized areas are very difficult to find high-quality teachers. So, I agree with you. I believe if the top candidate is more expensive or it would require us to be more competitive with salary, I would certainly be willing to share that with the Board and make that request. So, we've had those discussions, the high school principal and I, and we are out there looking aggressively, and if we need to pay a little bit more to give stability to the students, we will.
Okay, anybody else? No. Got a big crowd here. Okay. Okay, so now, onto the consent agenda. Approve the, is that, just approve the consent agenda? Okay, do I have a motion? Pete, second. Daj, all in favor? Oh, wait, do I say anybody have any discussion first? Rob, did you have anything there?
Just a quick one. I think it was in the consent agenda, there was an approval of a bus, Academy Bus. Is that, in, we approved, our last meeting, we approved a transportation agreement with another bus company. Is this subsequent, is this another, is this for our late classes? What's?
No, this is our in-district transportation that we use, Academy Bus, that transports our students to our, to schools, to school buildings. The one we approved last month was our out-of-district transportation, and for that one, we're in a consortium with Bronxville, Eastchester, and Pelham, and BOSI's runs that program for us, and they put together the contract for us.
One other, a quick one. We hired a, where is it? Someone to handle the bond, is that in case, appoint bond counsel. Is that in light of the capital project?
No, we have a bond counsel every year.
Every year, four?
Yes, but this year, I asked the bond counsel to put together just some overview of what would be required if we did have a bond as well, but they handle other financial matters for us as well.
Okay, that was it.
Okay, on to business of the Board. Oh, we didn't vote. Okay, all in favor? Okay, that was for the consent agenda. Business of the Board, first reading of policy. Okay, do I, Lauren, have to? I don't have to read anything. Okay, so, do we just say, does it say here, policy number 4526 and 4526R? This is for computer and network for education. Carl, do you want to discuss maybe what that's about there?
Yeah, I believe this was a recommendation from the auditors, just to make the district
more secure, requiring all staff members to update their passwords every 90 days. So, it's a minor change. It's a very good recommendation that protects the district.
Okay, and then, Lauren, this will remain on the agenda for second reading.
Reading and adoption at the next.
At the next meeting after that. Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, I don't, we don't do anything for that. You did tell me that already. Okay. Number two, increase lunch prices, school lunch prices. Resolved to increase the school lunch price from $2.70 to $2.85 for the 2017-18 school year. Is that, Lee, is that mandated, the increase?
It is. It's New York State Education Department, the Department of Child Nutrition. They have a formula that the district fills out. They provide us with a spreadsheet, and it's based on, actually, the USDA and the requirement that we cover our lunch expenses by the paid lunches, and that was what the formula requires us to raise the lunches to.
Okay, so I guess we had the discussion before. Okay, do I have a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Approve school attorney. Resolved to appoint Keenan Bean as Board Attorney for the 2017-18 school year for retainer fee of $60,000 or $5,000 per month for general counsel work and a retainer fee for $27,000 or $2,250 for negotiation services. Is it or? Or? 27, yeah, okay. And time spent on matters that fall outside either retainer arrangement will be billed at $225 per hour, services performed by attorneys, and $125 per hour for services performed by paralegals. Do I have a motion? Daj, second. Cynthia, discussion. No. I will just say that Keenan Bean is our new attorney last year. The Board did go through an extensive search the year before, and we have been very pleased with their services and I'm happy to keep them aboard, on board. So, all in favor? Okay, four, extend contracts. Resolved to extend the contracts for the following lowest responsible bidders for the 2017-18 school year at the same rate as the 2016-17 year. Air condit, do you need to read the whole thing? Yes, okay. Air Conditioning and Refrigeration Services bid, Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating. Electrical, do I have to give the dollar amounts for each one? No. Electrical bid, Scotty Electric. Plumbing bid, WM J Bell Plumbing and Heating. Heating Services bid, Oilco Heating Corp. Minor Repairs bid, T-Square Construction. Roofing Services bid, J Salvatore &amp; Sons. Athletic Trainer Symmetry Physical Therapy. Painting and Services bid, Mohegan Park Contractors, Inc. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Rob, all in, discussion?
Just a quick question. So, when we, when we resolve to extend the contracts, these are service contracts, and then they bill us for whatever work it is they perform?
Right, based on their quoted bid rate.
Okay, and then, when we look, just, I saw the athletic trainer, that was, that's, is that flat, that's a flat fee?
It is.
So, that one's a flat fee.
Right.
All the others are paid for services.
Per proposal, right, time and materials.
Do we pay them a fee to retain them?
No.
So, only as needed, basically?
As needed, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, number five, accept a bid. Resolved to accept the lowest responsible bid for the snow removal services for the 2017-18 school year from JMA Landscaping, Inc., Eastchester, New York. Do I have a motion? Daj, second. Rob, discussion. All in favor? Number six, accept a bid. Resolved to accept the facilities management bid from the following lowest responsible bidder in compliance with the bid specifications. A&amp;A Maintenance, 965 Midland Avenue, Yonkers, New York, at a rate of $400 per eight-hour DM, not to exceed $45,000. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Pete, all in, discussion.
So, is the plan here, we're going to have an individual who's going to represent A&amp;A, or is this, we call and then they send somebody?
No, the plan is to have a regular, ongoing person that will be working with us.
And then, is he scheduled to be here for a certain number of days, or is that just as needed or upon request?
As needed, exactly, as needed.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, number seven, extend a contract. Resolved to approve the one-year extension of the transportation contract with Academy Bus Company, Inc., through the 2017-18 school year at a 1.5% CPI. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion.
This is the one I was referring to.
Okay.
All in favor?
Number eight, approve an agreement. Resolved to approve the Independent Contractor Service Agreement with Precise Translations, LLC, for the period September 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, for interpreting, translating services at the attached rate schedule not to exceed $4,000. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Daj, discussion.
Just, I'd make just a comment for those that read the agenda. You'll see that in a lot of these that you're going to read, and I learned this from last year, although it says not to exceed a certain dollar amount, in this particular one, it says $4,000, and then in quotes you'll see, or in parentheses, it's what the spend was this past school year. So, the way, and then I think we had toward the end of last year, we had to come back in April or May.
A couple, yes.
And ask for additional approval to spend more money for some of these services. So, for those keeping track, there's a limit placed on it based on the budget. We spend a certain amount, and then if it's necessary, the administration will come back to the Board to get approval to approve additional spend for those services, correct? That's absolutely correct.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Number nine, approve an agreement. Resolved to approve the contract agreement with Contreras Translation Interpretation Services, Inc., for translation services for the 2017-18 school year, as per the attached rate sheet, not to exceed $5,000. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Cynthia, discussion. All in favor? Ten, consultant agreement. Resolved to approve an agreement for the consultant services with Christine Russo, Mayor, Audiology, for the period July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, for audiology, consultation, and fitting and monitoring of assistive technology at a rate of $195 per hour, not to exceed $1,500. Is there a motion? Daj, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number eleven, approve an agreement. Resolved to approve a consultant agreement with Andrea Russo, Urkel, Urkel? Urkelley, for feeding therapy services for the 2017-18 school year at a rate of $175 per 45-minute session, up to a maximum of $20,000. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion. I think these are specific services needed for specific students who have the need.
These are required, as per children's IEPs, so these are service providers that provide very specialized, special education service.
All in favor? Number twelve, approve an agreement. Resolved to approve an agreement with Bridge to Success, LLC, at a rate of $250 an hour for the psychological and educational assessments for the period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, not to exceed $10,000. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Daj, discussion. All in favor? Number fourteen, resolved to approve an agreement for homebound instruction services with ABC Tutoring for the period of July Tutoring for the period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, for tutoring services at a rate of fifty-five dollars an hour, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor?
Skip thirteen.
Oh, thank you, okay. Number thirteen. Oh, no, Bridge to, Bridge to Success. Oh. Okay, did I read?
You read twelve.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, number thirteen, I'm sorry, approve an agreement, again, resolve to approve an agreement with Bridge to Success, LLC, at a rate of seven hundred and fifty dollars an hour, for professional development for the period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? Is there, Carl, the difference between those two? I'm sorry?
Yes, this is a very high-level psychologist who first sometimes does individual evaluations that maybe our psychologist can't handle with their, their caseload and with the volume in a particular year. But also, we have this psychologist scheduled to train our special education teachers on performing evaluations, academic evaluations, and we're changing the model. So this is really a consultation for professional development.
Okay. So am I at fifteen, Lauren?
Yes.
Approve an agreement, resolve to approve an agreement for online instructional support service with iTutor, for the period July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, for tutoring services at a rate of fifty-five dollars an hour, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand. Seven, approve an agreement, number seventeen. Resolve to approve an independent contractor agreement with Christy Cosmo-
Sixteen.
Oh, thank you, okay. I'm sorry, let's go back to sixteen. Resolve to approve agreement for homebound instruction. Oh, I guess this is why, okay. Resolve to approve an agreement for homebound instruction services with Creative Tutoring for the period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, for tutoring services at a rate of fifty-five dollars per hour, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
I'll just mention-
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Yeah, well, you may be curious as to why we have three different tutoring services. So this is simply, you know, it's required by law, where if a child is home ill, or is, is home, homebound from school for whatever reason, that the school has to provide two hours a day of instruction. We like having several to choose from, because depending on the subject area, it can be very hard to find a certified teacher. So if we can't find it with one agency, we'll bounce to the other. And one of the three is actually an online tutoring service, which we've had very good experience this year with, because it's live tutoring, but, you know, it could be someone from up in Schenectady, and the rates are good, and, and, but they are certified teachers working with our students.
Okay. So we, all in favor? That was seventeen. Seventeen, resolve to approve an independent contractor agreement with Christy Cosmo-
Gianis. Cosmo Gianis.
Cosmo Gianis, for reading instruction services for the period of July 5th, 2017, through August 25th, 2017, at a rate of sixty-two dollars, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Eighteen, school district physician. Resolve to approve an agreement with Dr. Rosemary Caligaris, no, there's a name I know, for school district physician services as of, at a fee of ten thousand dollars for the 2017-18 school year. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Nineteen, approve an MOA. Resolve at the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves memorandum of agreement dated July 5th, 2017, binding between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? Carl, did you just want to touch on that?
Yeah, this, this is simply an agreement with our teachers' union. It was our first year of implementing teacher evaluations under the new APPR plan. Our approval came in late, so it required us to do some observations beyond June 9th, which is what we try to avoid. But it was a handful of teacher observations. They didn't want to set a precedent, so we agreed that this would not happen in the years going forward.
Okay. Did we already motion for that? Okay, all in favor? Okay, personnel. One, appoint a special education teacher. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Michael Whalen to a three-year probationary appointment as a teacher of special education in the special education tenure area commencing September 1st, 2017, and ending August 31st, 2020. Contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout his probationary period, consistent with the requirements of Education Law Sections 3012, 3012-C, and/or 3012-D on Step 3 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Mr. Whalen holds students and disabilities grades seven through twelve initial and one through six professional certifications. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion? Okay, would you, Carl, like to say a few words about Mr. Whalen?
Sure. Well, Mr. Whalen comes to us with, with very solid experience and background. He went through a very rigorous interview process at the middle school level, and we're happy to have him on board, serving with our middle school students. So, maybe we could invite him up to shake, shake hands?
Good luck to you, congratulations.
Welcome.
Okay, number two, appoint a special education teacher. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Whalen, all in favor?
All right, now you're official.
Number two, appoint a special education teacher. Oh, she's not, okay. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Danielle Smith to a four-year probationary appointment as a teacher of special education in the special education tenure area, commencing September 1st, 2017, and ending August 31st, 2020. Contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of Education Law Sections 3012, 3012-C, and/or 3012-D, on Step 1 BA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Smith holds students with disabilities one through six initial certification. 2021, so her probationary period ends August 31st, 2021. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? Carl, would you like to say something about Ms. Smith?
Sure. Ms. Smith went through a search process led by Dr. Ellen McDonnell, who is representing our district in Japan this week, but she, she went through a very rigorous process as well. Committee interview, committee interview with the Cottle staff. She did demonstration lessons, writing samples, reference checks. She graduated from Marist College and is pursuing her master's at SUNY Oneonta. We think she'll do great work for us and is very motivated and enthusiastic, so wel- welcome.
All in favor? Ms. Smith is not here tonight, but we do wish her the very best and- Oh, you are, yeah.
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, you look like one of the kids there. Congratulations, Danielle.
Welcome, welcome.
Good luck to you, Danielle. Okay, number three, appoint a special education teacher. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Elise Kos- is it Koski? To a three-year probationary appointment as a teacher of special education in the special education tenure area, commencing September 1st, 2017, and ending August 31st, 2020. Contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of Education Law Sections 3012, 3012-C, and/or 3012-D, on Step 5 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Koski holds childhood education one through six and dis- students with disabilities one through six professional certifications. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion?
Sure, Ms. Koski comes to us with very solid experience. She graduated Iona College, but her bachelor's degree was completed there, master's degree from Manhattan College, and she, I believe, has more than five years' experience working with special education students at the elementary level. She also went through a very rigorous process and emerged as our choice for this position, which is actually our special class program at the primary level, which is expanding up into grades two and three. The program is thriving, and I believe she'll do a great job with it.
She's here.
She's here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I think also, Carl, to say that all of these appointments that we're making now were laid out in our budget as new additions that we would need for the, this 2017-18 school year.
Sure, that's a good point to make.
All in favor? Number four, appoint a social studies teacher. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Patrick O'Connell to a four-year probationary appointment as teacher of social studies in the social studies tenure area, commencing September 1st, 2017, and ending August 31st, 2021. Contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout his probationary period, consistent with the requirements of Educational Law Sections 3012, 3012-C, and/or 3012-D, on Step 2 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Mr. O'Connell has, holds social studies seven through twelve initial certification. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion?
Sure, Mr. O'Connell interviewed at the, at the middle school with our outgoing principal, Ms. Ammon, as well as our incoming principal, Mr. Mark Barnett. The words they used to describe him are dynamic and capable. They were very impressed with him. He went to Albany State. He has his undergraduate work there and his graduate in, in US history and business, and I think he's a welcomed addition to our middle school social studies department. Welcome.
Okay. Welcome, good luck to you. Okay, number five. Oh, all in favor? Did we do all in favor? All in favor? Number five, appoint, appoint a point-six math teacher. Resolve on recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Valerie-
Frolic.
Frolic, to a point-six temporary appointment in the area of mathematics effective September 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, on a Step 6 MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Frolic holds a permanent certification in math seven through twelve. Is Ms. Frolic here?
She is not. Ms. Frolic is a returning teacher, so I don't have all of her educational background, but she's a high-level, hi- highly experienced math secondary teacher, and she served really well and was very effective this past year, so we're bringing her back. She took some time off for her family and is re-entering the teaching profession and doing a great job, so we welcome her back.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, we didn't motion. Okay, is there a motion? Pete, second. Discussion we just had, welcoming, welcome back, Ms. Frolic, all in favor? Number six, appoint a point-two ELA special education teacher. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Valerie Kaufman to a point-two temporary appointment in the area of ELA special education, effective September 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, on Step 4 MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Kaufman holds permanent certification in English seven through twelve and special education. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion? Carl?
Sure, Ms. Kaufman is, is a veteran teacher. She spent thirty years in the Austin School District, did some amazing work up there, has expertise in writing, has done some professional writing, and she's doing a point-two for us. So she is, I guess, semi-retired and highly qualified, and we welcome her. I don't, I don't think she's here this evening, though.
All in favor? Number seven, ESY program. Resolve to appoint Luke Byer as adaptive physical education teacher for the ESY program for this period July 5th, 2017, through August 25th, 2017, at a rate of sixty-two dollars per hour, as per the TTA contract. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Number eight, ESY program. Resolve to appoint the following individuals for the ESY program for special education students at their current hourly rate for the period July 3rd, 2017, through August 11th, 2017. Teaching assistant Julie Biffey, teacher's aide Lucia, Lucia, maybe, Destefano, Destefano. All in favor? Oh, no, is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Number nine, appoint a coach. Motion to appoint the following coach for the fall 2017-18 season, Lori Romeo JV coach stipend three thousand, four hundred dollars. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? How do we do that? Opposed? Okay. Good luck to the new program there. Number ten, appoint a stip- Excuse me?
Is this the right time?
No, you can do it at, at the end.
At the end?
Sure. Is that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. To, appoint a stipend. Resolve to appoint Heather Zemba as Images Art Advisor for the 2017 school year at a stipend of one thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion?
This is a little unusual. This is a retroactive stipend. Ms. Zemba is a fantastic art teacher. She was out on maternity leave, so this was an oversight, but she did perform the work. She did an amazing job as art advisor. When she returned, we just missed it because she was out.
Okay, all in favor? Number eleven, appoint stipends. Okay, so Lauren, do we go through this whole?
It has been past practice to read them all, but you can also say as listed in the agenda below.
Okay, well, let's say, if it's been past practice, maybe we should do it this time, and then when we, after we do our retreat, if we want to make changes, we'll do that then, okay? Resolve to appoint the following stipends for the 2017-18 school year. Lauren Nicoletti's Middle School Guide and Secretary, two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Tammy Warren, Custodian in Charge Elementary School, three thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Howard Williamson, Custodian in Charge Middle School, High School, prorated three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Megan Malloy, 10th Grade Advisor, one thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars. Antonette Martino, 10th Grade Co-Advisor, two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Rita Genteel, 12th Grade Co-Advisor, two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Edie Reedy Fernandez, Tuckahoe High School Middle School Drama Club Advisor, one thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Jennifer Capoche, Tuckahoe High School Geo Treasurer, three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Santo Garuffi, Jazz Band Director, two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Heather Zemba, you know, I'm not used to saying Heather Zemba, Images Art Advisor, one thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Edie Reedy Fernandez, Tuckahoe High School Middle School Show Choir Advisor, two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Santo Garuffi, Marching Band Director, seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Andrew Colasuno, Special Education After School Sports Advisor, one thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Catherine Mosher, Spring Musical Director, three thousand, four hundred dollars. Catherine Mosher, Spring Musical Producer, three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Santo Garuffi, Spring Musical Orchestra Director, two thousand, eight hundred thirty-four dollars. Edie Reedy Fernandez, Spring Musical Choral Director, two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Catherine Mosher, Tuckahoe High School Yearbook Advisor, eight hundred, five thousand and one dollars. Joanne Ornstein, Habitat for Humanity, one thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Julio Rodriguez, High School Geo Advisor, two thousand- Julio Rodriguez, High School Geo Advisor, $2,834. Edie Reedy Fernandez, Vocal Cats, $1,417. Angela Georgie, National Honor Society Co-Advisor, $472.33. Jessica Perillo, National Honor Society Co-Advisor, $472.33. Joanne Ornstein, National Honor Society Co-Advisor, $472.33. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion. I just say thank you to all of our staff that steps up to support these programs for our students. All in favor? Number 12, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Julia Kaplan, effective July 30th, 2017. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Dodge, discussion. All in favor? 13, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Alexandra Laubey, effective June 23rd, 2017. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number 14, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Luke Byer as teaching assistant, effective June 23rd, 2017. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion. All in favor? Number 15, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Caitlin DeSimone, effective July 1st, 2017. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Cynthia, discussion. All in favor? Number 16, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Stephanie Stroud, effective August 31st, 2017. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, all in favor?
Can I go back to something that was read before?
Sure.
Luke Byer?
Yeah.
Says he resigned, effective June 23rd.
As a teaching assistant.
Switched positions. July 5th. So he's just switching positions just for the summer?
Yes, well, not just that. A few steps down, he's being recommended for a leave replacement, phys ed position. He's resigning from a teaching assistant position, but he is a certified physical education teacher.
Thank you.
Number seven... So did we vote it? All in favor? 17, accept a retirement. Resolved to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Howard Williamson, effective July 31st, 2017. Do we have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion.
I would like to, if it's okay, say a few words.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Howard Williamson is retiring at the end of this month. He began... He's been a valued employee for the Tuckahoe Schools for 12 years, beginning his career here in April of 2005. Howard is one of the quiet heroes of our school district. He's always the first to arrive each day, cleans up things that no one dares to touch, and befriends everyone who passes by. Howard is the kind of school custodian who takes the custody of a school seriously and then some. Although Howard and I have only worked together for one year, I've seen firsthand Howard's commitment to the Tuckahoe community. He understands that the physical condition of school buildings and grounds is a key factor in the health and safety of our students, staff, and visitors, and that it promotes learning. In any snowstorm or emergency, Howard is on top of the problem. He makes sure that the schools are properly maintained, running smoothly, and ready to receive our students. His attention to detail is unmatched, and he takes great pride in his work. Howard is a great role model and has made a positive impact on everyone he works with in Tuckahoe. Head custodian since 2011, Howard works side by side on any task with the other custodians. He's a respected leader. His work ethic and dedication to our schools is well-known. He's the ultimate team player, always putting the district first. Howard is well-loved and respected by students and staff and the community. He has a kind word for everyone he sees and always conveys a positive attitude. He will be missed. We wish him the very best in retirement.
Thank you, Lee, that was lovely. I would say about Howard, no one has a bigger smile than Howard, and I'm sure he'll be smiling through his retirement, so wish him the best of luck.
And I will just add, you know, Howard intentionally waited to announce his retirement. He did not want to become emotional. We had a little send-off for him today. It was very warm, but it was a small group of people. And he expressed how much he loves the students, and he just wasn't able to announce it until after school ended. So he'll be missed, and we wish him well and all the best in retirement.
All in favor? Number 18, approve a leave replacement. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Luke Byer to a 13-week leave replacement in the position of physical education at William E. Cottle School, effective September 1st, 2017, through December 1st, 2017, or sooner at the discretion of the board, on Step 1 BA of the TTA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Okay, so now this is the second recognition of the audience. So anyone who'd like to come up and say a few words, just please give your name. And do we have to give an address or just their name? Just their name? That would be fine. Okay.
My name is Kyle... My name is Kyle Jordan. First, I'd like to congratulate the board, the new appointments. Thank you for... Those of you that have been on the board for what you've done, and the new individuals on what you will do. What I find alarming is that 15 or 20 appointments that were made today, without reservation, the entire board raised their hand and said, "Yes, we're in." And I would hope that each of you can act objectively when it comes to our students. So the one thing I noticed in the beginning was you mentioned you were happy about the awards and seeing the success of the children. But when it came to painting, or electrical, or contracts for the school, everybody raised their hand. But when it comes to something that actually affects the kids, two of you didn't. So I would hope that you could act objectively and know what's right for the students. So what we've seen is wonderful success in the cheerleading program for my daughter, Olivia, and other individual kids that we've... All of you. I mean, there's probably a panoply of them here. I just want to make sure that you look at this without any reservation and understand what it means to the community, the kids, when you make those decisions and those votes. So the way I understand it is, it didn't get approved, is that correct?
No, it did. It was a 3-2 vote.
It was a 3-2 vote?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so it is approved. With this, is this the opportunity now to talk about what this program needs moving forward? Or is it just one coach? Or will there be multiple coaches? An assistant coach?
You can ask those questions... Well, one thing I do want, I just want to say to you, and thank you for your comments, that the board does receive the agenda ahead of time.
Okay.
So every decision that I know that I make and that the board, our other board members make, we do. If we have questions, or we want to research, or we want to get more information on something, we do have that opportunity. So when you say our hands go over, it's because we've already thought out or researched or, you know, basically done our homework on many items. So I don't want to give the impression that we're just going like this. We have read and we are taking that into consideration, the things that you are saying. Maybe Austin is here, and if he wants to discuss the program, if you'd like to hear...
It just seemed like everything was unanimous, right? I mean, even the most mundane of things that are important to our kids, right? You want to have the lights running, you want to have oil, you want to have repairs. Obviously, anything around special needs, those were all approved. But when it got to this one, I just found it funny that it wasn't unanimous. And I wondered why.
Right. Well, I think, you know, two things. One, when it's personnel, and I know it's very difficult to just hear a yes or a no, and not to hear more information. But when it is a personnel appointment, it is a difficult thing to discuss publicly. I will say that the board, and although two members are new, the previous board did unanimously support the formation of the team when we passed our budget in May, when we voted, when we approved the budget. The formation of the team was approved by this board. Well, not this board, but the board at the time. So the... You know, it's two different things that we're talking about. There's the personnel appointment and the support of the program. They were actually two different... You know, it was in a collective vote, but it was voted on.
Okay.
And it was not singled out or taken out of the budget. It is a budgeted-for item.
Okay. I don't want to take, I don't want to make this a filibuster and stand up here for a long period of time.
You can...
What I think you've seen from the team and the success they've had, you referenced the awards that students received this year in academics and all the other things. When you look at the history of this team, actually having a national title, having a world title, part of the success of that team is the consistency they have from the coaching, the counseling, the counseling, the reinforcement that they get from the staff and the coaches that they've had leading up to this. So I'm happy to see that Lori has been appointed. But I do think what you'll see is they rely upon each of the coaches that they've had before for different needs and different things, right? So it might just be what they've experienced, and I think that's part of the success that they've had. So I don't want you to overlook the opportunity to have other individuals support the team and be able to actually get them to win at this level, at the JV level, if that's what they move forward and decide to do. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hey, good evening. Happy belated fourth, Richard Zicconi, 108 Parkview in Chester Heights. Just want to thank... Well, welcome the new board members, as Kyle did, and thank you for your service. It's a tough job. Also, want to thank those that voted for the appointment of the JV coach. I know Mrs. Romeo, she would have been here as well. I know she would want to be here, just so you know. She's on a flight, delayed flight, back from Florida, which otherwise she would have been here tonight. Thank you. These girls work hard. These coaches support them. I can speak personally for my daughter. Seven out of the last eight marking periods, she's been on principals' list. She got the STEM Award this year as an eighth grader, and she's a cheerleader. So these coaches, Coach Lori, other coaches that support them, are all about these girls, about their academics, making sure they succeed not only on the mat, but also in life and academics. These girls work really hard, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Mike Pepperman. I live at 126 Parkview Drive, Bronxville, New York, and suffering from allergies, sorry. First of all, congratulations to the new board members. And thank you all for your time, because you do something a lot of us would not be able to do, to sit up here as often as you do and to hear as many opinions as you do. And I know the job is probably not gratifying at sometimes, but thank you for your time. And I want to thank Mr. Goldberg for, you know, putting forward in, you know, previous meetings, and then it was voted upon to have a JV team. Being fortunate enough this year, myself, to officiate high school sports, to see at JV level the cheerleaders at football games and at basketball games. Sometimes, you know, the JV team would play, and the varsity team would play. So to really do school spirit, it really brings it into, you know, it really raises the school spirit of those teams and the competitions. And to have another team to allow more girls to compete at the high school level, rather than just the varsity, I think will be a great thing. So we're looking forward to that. I also want to thank Mr. Goldberg for finding such a qualified candidate. Because if you think if we are lucky enough as we go forward, and we need to get a new football coach, or a new basketball coach, or a new baseball coach, and you had somebody who had a state championship or a district championship, or something along those lines, on their pedigree, that would be a no-brainer to vote for that person that's had such success in, you know, in coaching in their field. So I thank those board members that voted yes. And, you know, I look forward to what this will bring to the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Danielle Neles. It's a lot different sitting on that side of the table. I want to thank you guys for what you're going to embark on this year. I'm sure it's not going to be easy. But I wanted to thank you for putting Coach Lori in. I know there's a small sampling of girls here that are going to be interested in trying out. And I know from conversation that it's probably upwards of 20 or more at this point that are interested in the team. So I'm hoping that posting goes forward to get an assistant in so that they are ready to start if they do make the team at the end of August, like everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, look who it is.
I promise I won't come in every meeting. Steven Pagnotta, 21 Crawford Street. I didn't, I sat back. I did want to say something about Mr. Albano, the principal. I was one of the folks that voted to accept his resignation. I want to congratulate him for his years of service. He will be missed dearly by this district. I think every child in this room had Mr. Albano at one point or another. Also, want to thank you for the coaches that were appointed today and all the stipends. And if there are children out there that want to cheer, please come out and try. I think these girls would love to have more kids on the team, our girls. So thanks, everybody, and I'm out of here. Take care. Thanks, congratulations, everybody.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Julia Kaufman. I also want to thank you for all your hard work, as well as for appointing Coach Lori for the JV, or potential JV team. And would also like to request that you consider having an assistant coach. That would greatly benefit the team, and I think it will be necessary for the number of girls that'll probably be interested. And it'll certainly probably be a safety issue if we don't have it. So I'd like our girls to play hard and try hard and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So is that it, Lauren? Okay. Okay, so adjourn. So tonight, so that's it, adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Dodge, second. Rob, all in favor? Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming.